This is the Rutland Town Select Board meeting for January 19th, 5:00 PM. We have Joe Donardo, we have, I think I saw JP.
Yes.
JP Fagnant, we have Aaron Jones, we have Sharon Russell, and Sharon?
I'm here.
Okay, and Joe Donardo?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. We also have Bill Sweet, our Town Administrative Assistant. We have Byron Hathaway, Mike Rowe, Larry Del Venary, Ed Dumas, and let's see, who else we have? Chris Howland, Marty Wasserman, our Town Clerk, Carrie Clark, Jim Schultz, our Delinquent Tax Collector, and Lydia Flynn. Did I get everybody? Good, okay. So the orders have been prepared and they're in the Town Clerk's office, so please do take a minute to stop in and sign them. There's also some minutes there to sign. Who's munching? JP, is that you? Okay.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Did you ask me something?
Only if you were munching. Okay, so we'll go first to the approval of the Select Board minutes for January 5th. They were in our packet. Have folks had a chance to review them?
I'm going to accept the minutes.
Second.
Okay, motions made by Joey, seconded by Sharon to accept the minutes of the January 5th meeting. Any corrections, additions, deletions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I will sign them and leave them in here, so you can add that to your collection of documents to sign. We also have the Highway Committee minutes of January 11th, but that doesn't need to be accepted by the full board. We do have the minutes of the Health Board.
Mary, I didn't email those to everybody. You just have the copy on your desk. I didn't email them out, but it's just the executive session minutes, but yeah.
Okay, all right. So why don't we put them in the packet for next time, so folks will have a chance to see them. All right. Next item on the agenda, are there any questions or comments from the floor, public comment? These would be folks who are not otherwise on tonight's agenda. Not seeing anything, so we will move along. Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board, what have you got for us?
Good evening. Just a few things. Keep it quicker in the packet. We have the updated meeting schedules. It should be current in the packet. So number two came from the Highway Committee, is the draft RFP for the Scoping Study Services. In the Highway Committee meeting, we talked about using the state's list. We still need the source one, so that is a RFP proposal to go out to them. Anything that's kind of shaded is the information that we, or I plugged in, so that's what we would be able to change, but I think that's probably what we would go with. So that's for everybody to review. Once that's approved, then we can send that out to get proposals back.
Okay. Did folks have a chance to review it? Are you comfortable with approving this or deciding this tonight? This is for the sidewalk, which is Route 7 north of town, aka JP's sidewalk.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by JP, seconded by Sharon to approve the request for proposals for Design Engineering Services. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Okay, so I'll get that finalized and sent out. Number three is an article that was in the Herald about legislation regarding fireworks and changes that can be coming to that. So it's been on our discussions lately, so that was some good information on that. Four and five are both from Byron. Number four is the invitation to bid the Gleason Road culvert, and number five is his draft paving bid. So that was everything from the packet. And then I emailed out to everybody a request from the Chamber of Commerce. Lyle Jepson had sent out a request to a few different towns about a location for a new business to cultivate cannabis. They're looking for a spot for them to go. Initially, a 20,000 square foot facility with the possibility to grow to 100,000 square foot manufacturing retail. So the towns, any town that would be able to accept this would have to vote to opt in to allow such a facility to be built. So I spent a little while talking with him this afternoon. We were talking about different locations around town, and he says we have several that would be advantageous, but the board would need to take an affirmative vote to allow it.
So what's your thoughts on this?
I would move that we allow that development in the town.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Did they give any indication which locations in the town?
No. So he and I talked about some locations on Ranbury Road, discussing some of the properties down there that may be available, and the former Rutland Plywood site. So that would obviously need to be fully done, fully constructed, but he said that the couple sites we were looking at were very good, but he wanted to know the outcome of the vote tonight before he could say. But they are looking, they would want municipal water and sewer. Unfortunately, both those locations now do offer that, so there are some options for them to expand this business into the town, so.
Did they give any indication of the number of employees?
No.
That size estimate is similar to what's going on there in North Hampton, and I think they have almost upwards of 25 employees.
So I did forward out to you all the information he sent me, but he did not say anything about, just looking over right now, nothing about number of employees, but just saying the size of the facility. Initially, they're looking to either build or move into a 20,000 square foot facility with opportunity to grow to 100,000 square foot facility. So that's, that was the only reference to the size of the operation at the moment. Right.
Perfect, perfect building for the old Rutland Plywood place. They could easily put a build in there, and it's nicely located.
Yeah, well, that was another one that came to mind. So yeah, we're talking about both of those. He's actually got another, someone who's looking for a warehouse facility with municipal water and sewer for another operation as well. So we spent a while talking about some different things today. But he did need, well, I did say we needed to vote to do that, so.
Hi, my name is Thomas Bovineau. I don't know if you can hear me?
Yes, Thomas, I see. Go ahead.
My apartment is 156 Simons Avenue, Center Rutland, Apartment 1. I've had an inspection that was in September. The Health Inspector, John Fagnant, was supposed to come back. I haven't been able to get ahold of him. I've called Bill, I've called many people. I've had the state involved, the state fire marshal involved. I'm having a lot of issues with my apartment. I haven't been able to join a Zoom meeting at all due to being so busy. I'm trying to find another apartment, but I'm getting, literally, I'm in court right now to get evicted because of the issues that are going on with the apartment. I will not pay the man because he will not fix anything properly. He does not have a permit to do electricity work. He did electricity work in the apartment. He's done plumbing work. He does not have a permit to do plumbing work. My landlord is Timothy Crossman. He lives in New Hampshire. He's literally crossed the border with signs of COVID and tried to enter my apartment.
Okay, thank you, Thomas. Actually, one of the people on the call is John Paul Fagnant, who is our Health Officer, as well as a Select Board member. So why don't I request that JP got in touch with you?
I have tried to, I have requested him to get in touch with me about six times. I've never received a phone call, never received a text message, an email, or anything. I'm just, I'm trying, and I'm not getting anywhere.
Mary?
Yeah?
Mary, point of order. Shouldn't we hold off and discuss this gentleman's concerns after we vote on the motion that JP made, I seconded about this location? I don't think the gentleman understands. He kind of jumped in in the middle of that.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. Your point is well taken. Mr. Boisfer, sorry.
Bovineau.
Okay, Bovineau. Missed the opportunity to speak under public comments, so we got into other matters. And it was my error, no apologies necessary, my error. So hold on a minute, please, and we are in the middle of a motion, which is to go ahead and give Lyle Jepson indication that the town would be willing to host manufacturing business for cannabis. I do have a question, and it's, this is to Bill, if I notice that under local control, Lyle's memo to us, it does say municipalities could not choose to prohibit other types of cannabis businesses. That means that we couldn't then do, apparently we can't prohibit retail sales or smaller sales. Am I correct on that?
I think that's what that refers to, is to vote in affirmative to allow it. It kind of opens the door to it. So if we, if we vote for it, it opens the door. If we vote against it, it closes the door. I don't think there's opportunity to pick and choose, but I can, I haven't had a chance to look through all the attachments he sent, but he's had some other, there's some attachments along in there too, and I can look into that.
Okay.
The next bullet point on that, Mary, I do see it says localities may develop regulations and municipal licensing requirements, so we could visit that.
Yep. Okay, any further questions or discussion? You have in mind the motion, which is in approval? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
All right, that is, that's everything I have on my desk. It's all for me.
Okay. So we have just a reminder, limited time tonight, because at 6 o'clock, the Zoom meeting will begin for the pre-town meeting, and it's going to begin, I think, with the school board, right, Bill?
That's correct. They'll be ready to go at 6:00.
Okay. Carrie Clark, Town Clerk Treasurer.
Hi there, good evening. Two things very quickly tonight. Just a reminder, if you are wanting to run in March, and you want your name on the ballot, if you're up for reelection, or if you want to, if you're a new candidate, I need your consent form by Monday, the 25th. I do have several that I've received already. And after that, Janelle, who's taking over the circle for Carol Bam, has asked if any candidates would like to submit a statement for the next circle in regards to their candidacy. So I need to get their names and their statements to her as soon as possible. And the last thing for our second installment of taxes, it's nice to report that we've received 94% of our taxes, and looking for about 6% more for the second installment. And that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Any questions for Carrie? All right, thank you very much, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Barbara, noise pulling, are you on tonight?
Yes, I am.
Hi, Barbara.
Good evening. Hi, everybody. I didn't bring anything to discuss. Nothing new with the Planning Commission, but if there's anything you want me to take back to the group, I'm all ears.
Hearing nothing? I think they're all satisfied. Thank you, Barbara.
Okay.
Mike Rowe, Town Recreation Director.
All I have is that basketball is starting for our rec program, and we're working on the logistics of our K-12 program, and how we're going to do that safely and efficiently. And so people, they've started last week when the governor said we could start, and we're following all the protocol, and the kids are ecstatic to be doing something other than just hanging out.
Good.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Mike Rowe? Okay, very good. Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner.
Good evening. Just two quick items for you tonight. One was the two items in your packet. I do not, I put them in there for your information. I don't need any action on them tonight, but we'd like to have approval sometime between now and the 1st of March, before town meeting time. So that takes care of that. The other is, there was a discussion at the Highway Committee meeting. I don't know if Mary wants to bring this forward or not, in regards to replacing the current little truck that we have. If we follow, under the state's bid guidelines, we can get state bid pricing. That's already been done. We just need to sit down with the fleet manager from Ford and spec out the truck and get that under motion. Probably it's a minimum of 12 weeks to get a cabin chassis, and then probably at least three to four months after that to get a bodybuilder to assemble the truck for us. So if we start now, probably you're looking at six to nine months at a minimum before we get our new truck. That puts us close to next winter. So I'm just looking for guidance from the Select Board. If you want me to follow under the state bid, I can make the phone call tomorrow, get the truck started, and get that done. And the same with the bodybuilder. The bodybuilder that we normally use is under the state bid. That's Viking out of Williston, and it would just be a matter of sitting down with them and hammering out what we're going to put on that truck, and we would get state bid pricing on that. I just need the board to go ahead and do that.
So as Byron said, the Highway Committee met January 11th. Joe Donardo was there, as well as Byron and myself, and we do recommend that we use the list of pre-approved vendors that the state has. So I would entertain a motion to do so. We can move along on this.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion's made by Sharon, seconded by Joe, to use the list of pre-approved vendors for the purchase of the new highway truck, replacing the one-ton truck. Any discussion or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay. Go ahead with that. Thank you, Byron. And I think it looks like you'll be writing an RFP as well.
That's not my understanding. My understanding is there's a one fellow in the state that does the fleet management for Ford, and we just sit down and talk with him, and the same with Viking. If you want a formal RFP sent out, I can do that.
I don't, I don't think you have to, Byron. Once we approve you're using the state bid, you can just move ahead with that, and I think we'll be good.
That's fine. The bid has already secured all the bid pricing on all this stuff. It's a matter of making contact and figuring out what to call.
Okay. I will say that while the Highway Committee met, we went through everything that was on our list of things to be considered that had been growing for some time, and we were able to cross off a number of them. So more to come on that, I think, but we did a pretty good job of catching up. And thank you to Byron and Joe for moving that along. Okay, so question to Byron on the invitation to bid on culvert installation? This is for Gleason Road, right?
That's right.
All right, and that's the one that could fail at any time?
It is failing, yes. The shoulder has dropped a little more. It's one of those things you keep an eye on. If it collapses worse than it is, then we'll have to move, you know, maybe to either a one-lane situation there for the remainder of the winter, or, you know, closing the road at that point.
Well, I'm wondering if it might be wise to move along on this and approve the invitation to bid for this tonight?
I would, Mary, I would move that, I would make the motion that we do move forward and allow the Road Commissioner to put that project out to bid. Add to the specifications that he presented to us.
Okay, the only reason I put it in here now was so that I could put it out to bid once we have an approved budget at town meeting day. The next day, I would put that out to bid.
Okay.
That's what I said.
As long as we're discussing this, Byron, because I'll be presenting your budget this evening at the pre-town meeting, I do, if I remember properly, the 70,000 in culvert replacement is specifically to go toward that project, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, because that's about the only item in that whole budget that went up, other than the normal increases in your budget. So I just wanted to make sure I presented that properly. And we are anticipating replacing it because of it being failed. So do we approve it now, Mary, and just have him ready to go March 1st, or after the vote? I'd say that's okay.
I'm fine with that, but keep in mind that we also have money in this year's budget, maybe not for this, but we didn't spend our paving budget for this year. So if this did fail and we had to move quickly, there are other ways of funding this, and that was mostly my concern.
Right, but the only thing about moving quickly on it, Mary, is the fact that it's only permitted to be constructed during July, October, July, August, and September.
Okay, I see your point. Okay, so we can table the motion, and then it will show up and remind us that we need to deal with it after town meeting.
Whatever the rest of the board wants to do, I just don't, you know, I can make the motion that it would, Byron could put it out to bid pending a successful highway budget, March, approved highway budget. And that way, we're covered.
That's what I'm looking for.
Okay, so the motion is amended to make a contingent upon our budget, highway budget passing. Sharon, do you accept that?
Yes.
Okay, so what's your pleasure now on the amended motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so there you go, Byron. You can post it as soon as the budget passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Oh, why don't you talk about why we were up at the Highway Garage today?
Okay, we had a meeting today at the Highway Garage to discuss the alignment with shared use path at Northwood Park to connect with Savannah Drive. We met with Mary Ashcroft and Mike Rowe, the engineer, Robert Clark, and he had preliminary plans drawn with several different routes that could be taken. We examined those. We felt there was one route that stood out, because one, it was the shortest route; two, it also minimized disturbance up there to other areas of the park. So it would minimize tree cutting, that sort of thing. And we agreed on that one particular route. We looked at it as option one. And at this point, Robert's going to finalize his plans. He thought within the next two weeks he would have mostly that done and drawn up for further review.
Okay, good, thank you, Byron. That was a good meeting, an interesting meeting, so thank you all. Anything further for the Road Commissioner? If not, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Hi there, not much to report. The fire department did get, they're allowed to go get their first Corona vaccine shot, so whoever was on the roster is going to go get that. I'd say a handful of people have gone already, so that's good for us, and it's really all I got to tell you.
Okay. Any questions of the Town Fire Chief?
Chris, the former Cheney Hill School up there on Cedar Avenue, when that was town property, we installed a lockbox, key box on that building. I'm not sure who the new owners are, but I guess if I were as you, I would get in touch with them and see if they want to put keys in it. Otherwise, take the box. We paid for that. The Town Fire Department paid for that box to be put on that building, and that's ours. So if they don't want it and are opposed to you taking it off, there's a whatever, $200 and something dollar lockbox on that building.
Okay, I'll look into it.
Yeah, I figured you could have it for another location, or maybe the new owner wants it.
Okay, I'll ask them.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief.
Good evening.
Evening.
Yeah, so last paper, we had 22 calls for service. We were down on them, mainly because Ted's been out and Arthur Gamble's been out also, usual stuff there. We also were on the roster to get our vaccination for COVID-19. I want to say all of us have done it, I think. And that's about all I have for tonight. Oh, yeah, one other thing, Mary, we talked about, I got in touch with the state attorney in reference to business in town. I got to get in touch with JP, and we're going to sit down and write up a quick affidavit, and we'll hear that item.
Okay. Very good, thank you, Ed. Any questions from Select Board members of our police chief? Okay, thanks. On to John Paul Fagnant, Town Health Officer.
So currently, essential positions are allowed to receive the vaccine, and the hospital has call-in numbers that are available for everybody on a police or fire department roster. Starting January 25th, shots are going to be made available to anybody 75 years and older, and according to the most recent information, vaccines will be open to everybody on an appointment basis beginning January 27th. So you can keep those dates in mind. I do want to address the gentleman who spoke earlier. I did inspect that property. I brought along a local contractor. We did find some violations, but they weren't enough to condemn the property. The gentleman made it clear to me that he wanted the property condemned, thought it should be condemned, and I said that my builder said there aren't any actual life safety code violations, and I can't condemn the apartment. But I did get in touch with the landlord, and he confirmed for me that he addressed the issues, but in the meantime, the gentleman started text bombing me and claiming he was going to make a claim against me, and that he had been assaulted at the apartment. There were just a host of issues going on, so I just decided I wouldn't be involved in the situation any further. He told me that he'd gone legal, that there were lawyers involved, and he was looking to have the place condemned when it's really not in a situation where it can be condemned.
Okay, thank you, JP. Any further questions of our Town Health Officer? Okay, moving along, committee meeting updates. Okay, moving along, committee meeting updates. We've heard about the highway committee meeting, we've heard about the meeting that was on the shared use path today. Any other meetings? All right. I'll skip over the update on the project list. We do have some issues that I want to make sure we hit. So down under new business A, the board to discuss use of force indemnification policy. I don't believe we have circulated that among the board, have we?
I didn't know I was on you, I'm sorry about that, may I speak?
No, we've, we just passed over the item and we heard from our town health officer, is this Thomas?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so he's explained his side of it, you explained yours. If, I will, I can give you a number if you wish additional legal assistance.
I have legal aid right now.
Okay, good, that was the number I was gonna, that was the number I was going to give you, so. So we are, we're concluded with the discussion of this tonight and we have heard from, briefly from you and briefly from our health officer. And at this point, because there are no code violations, it appears to be a civil matter that you should be taking up through legal aid if you wish with the landlord.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Is there, I was going to ask one more question. Is there any, I know they're doing government funds for like back rent. Is there any way, is there, is there still doing that in February, I've heard, or something about that?
My understanding is that they are, and I think the legal aid attorneys would have that information for you. Yes, there is a pot of money that would assist with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm moving, my lease is up in February and I plan on just getting out because it's not worth, and I'm not, and I'm, there's nothing to do, so I'm just going to move.
Why don't you talk that over with your attorney and they'll point you in the right direction? Because legal aid is instrumental in that distributing the CARES Act pot of money for housing, okay?
Thank you ma'am, you have a nice night.
You too. Okay, so I think we should, on the use of force indemnification policy, it looks like that needs to be put in the packet and recirculated, circulated to the select board. And we'll put that on our next agenda. New business, item B, the board to discuss the scholarship funding request for the ballot. I think Carrie, this was your question. In most, in previous, years previous to last year, amount of money for the scholarships had been 10,000. Last year we increased it to 15,000. And I believe the question is whether we continue it at 15,000. And because this has to be voted on by voters at town meeting, we need to decide this tonight. Any thoughts on this? Sharon's on the scholarship committee.
I, I would, at this point, and because there are people out of work, there's lots of things. I would say we remain at the 15,000.
Okay. I'm also on the scholarship committee, I would agree. Cost of, of higher education goes up all the time and we saw some excellent resumes and letters of interest from students last year and I expect the same this year. And I don't think we need a motion, well, maybe we do need a motion because we're putting it on the ballot. So Sharon, can I treat that as a motion?
You can.
Okay, any second to the motion, this is for scholarship amount $15,000.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, any further discussion?
Mary, what did we vote on last March, I thought, was it 15?
Yes.
Okay, so I thought once we voted on it to do it from 10 to 15, it would just stay there, but I guess we have to do it every year?
You know, I'm not sure of that, but just to clear up any question, let's just vote on it again this year and that'll give us time to check for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other discussion? If not, the motion is to put on the ballot a $15,000 appropriation for scholarship for higher education for Rutland Town students. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you've agreed to the motion. Now, we have a few other things here. First of all, the circle is, well, you saw it, the circle is out. The next circle, the deadline for article submission will be February 1st. So please keep that in mind, particularly if you're a department head or if you are running for office, okay? And you want to have a statement included in the circle. The deadline is February 1st and you need to be in touch with Janelle Fagin. I think Bill has her email and can supply that to you. And if not, we'll, we'll get it to you, okay? The, one issue that we had discussed and we have before us is the, now we're down under new business, the B, the board to discuss wording for establishing the proposed transfer station depreciation account. Bill, you've received some correspondence from our town attorney, Kevin Brown, about this.
Correct. I forwarded out to the board members earlier, I just, just got it just literally a couple hours ago. So he had sent out, or he's sent to us, which I forwarded on, language that says establish the fund for .00125 cents per 100 of assessed valuation. But he commented that we, we want to consider 12 and a half cents per 100, but Mary and I weren't sure that was going to get us the intended result.
Actually, we did the math on the grand list and that would raise something like $11 million, which seemed to be too much.
Bill, you're getting a brand new transfer station.
So, so this is, the wording, I, I don't know why it's so complicated because all of the wording except for the amount should be the same for every depreciation fund. The only thing I didn't notice in the proposal is that there is no cap on it, which we suggested. And I'm okay doing this without a cap. I just need somebody to do the math to make sure that that percentage, .00125, raises the amount required. Because I do believe that the fire department is currently getting one and three quarters, one and a half cents in that cents per hundred dollars of, you know, I just want to make sure the math is right because we messed this up with the police department depreciation account and we lost the whole year, so. And I've done the math, but I don't know if I'm doing it right and I've come up with two different figures, so I just shut the calculator off.
So can I interject, this is Carrie.
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
So I sent out an email to all select board members about exactly the breakdown and what the math looked like of each statement, including the correct statement and the, using the incorrect statement, which was, which happened a couple years ago. And it outlines exactly how much money, based on the grand list of the, of this year. Obviously, that number will change a little bit for next year. But having said that, the .00125 per 100 of assessed value will get you $11,000 roughly, based on the grand list. So if you haven't seen it yet, check out your email because it's right there. If we were to put the word sent in there, that would significantly reduce the amount of money that would be going into it. So the wording is taken exactly the way that all the other depreciation accounts are worded, as you had said, and you're correct. But I wanted to make sure that the math was correct. And I've had the lawyer look at this, Kevin Brown, and I've had our bank representative look at this and this is what we've all come up with.
Okay, so what we have in front of us from Kevin from earlier today is essentially correct if we take out the word cents after the .00125.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good with that. I just want to make sure, and I, and I'll trust Carrie's math and her formulation because I don't know what the heck I'm doing, so as long as she's good with it. And that's about, that's about the amount of money that JP and Bill and Larry and myself discussed. And that will get us some money there to help replace some aging equipment up there that, you know, could fail. And, and that's the whole idea of these funds. So if we take the cents out, we're good and as long as Carrie's good, that's her job, I'm happy.
Okay. So in order to put this on the ballot and talk about it tonight too, I would entertain a motion to approve what was sent to us from Kevin Brown with the elimination of the word cents, sent.
So moved.
Okay, so motion was made by Joe, seconded by Sharon. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so this is headed to go on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Mary, will you present that tonight?
It would be part of the, unless somebody else wants to, yes, I can do it as part of the general.
Okay, perfect. I, I don't know, I guess usually the chair gets stuck with the majority of the talking at this meeting, so. I, I just make it sure somebody, because I don't have it written in front of me right perfectly, so I would prefer you do because you have it written, I believe.
Okay, and Carrie, would you tell me again, just based upon the current grand list, how much this is expected to raise?
Absolutely, so it looks like $11,154.75.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we've taken care of old business B. The paving bid is held off for the next time. I do want to note that there was a piece of legislation that the governor signed today that allows the towns to mail out ballots so that people can participate in town meeting either by coming in person or by mailing the ballot back in. And this is H48, which was signed today. And it says, "A municipal legislative body may require the municipal clerk to mail to all of the active registered voters in the municipality the Australian ballot to be used at the 2021 annual municipal meeting." So it looks like the legislature, the legislative body is us, the select board, would have to act and if we chose to do this and instruct the municipal clerk to mail out ballots. So I wanted to point that out. Carrie, what's the timing for getting ballots to people prior to town meeting? When do you have to have them mailed out?
Well, I haven't looked particularly into the dates, but I do know that having been asked this question, it's going to be a huge time crunch because I have to, after this approval of the warning, then send that off to the printers and have the ballot made. And then you're talking like within weeks, we would have to, if we were to do a townwide mailout, it would be huge crunch time to get everyone a mail-in ballot. I think they also, did they talk about, and I know we're not going to do this, probably not, but moving town meeting day to accommodate the mail-in ballots if, if town wishes to do so? Is that part of that?
That is part of the bill. It says, "A municipal legislative body may vote to move the date of the municipality's 2021 annual meeting to a date later in the year 2021."
Yeah. I just know that at this point, I mean, I have a calendar in front of me, I can quickly scan when ballots need to be printed by, but it's going to be a huge time crunch if we were to do townwide.
Okay.
Carrie, what's the, excuse me, Mary, Carrie, what's the deadline for like folks running for office and budgets and stuff, is it like the 25th of this month, is that, is that the date?
Yep, as far as for candidates, it's the 25th, which is Monday. I can quickly scan for the rest of the ballots to be printed.
Yeah, I thought it was like everything, if I remember in the past, everything is due like at one date. Like you have to have your budgets, numbers, and you have to have your candidates, which allows you time to get the ballot formulated, printed, and, and have them available. Do you have any other, any suggestions of your own as to how we should do the election? What, what do you, what would you like to do?
Are, are you asking me, Joe?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're the one that's going to bear the brunt of this, so you tell us how you think we should do it or what you would like us to do.
Well, honestly, I, when I think of this election, I am thinking that it can just run like a normal election instead of having a townwide mail-in like we did in November. Just because we're still having that option of anyone can give us a request for an absentee ballot. And, you know, they have that option. So at this point, I don't see that we should do anything special, but then again, you know, I'm, I'm open to being flexible, but I, I kind of picture it going kind of traditional in my mind.
So, so if I understand it currently, any town resident can get a hold of your office and request a ballot? And you'll mail it to them? Right, and then it, then what that does is that puts the burden on their back to make sure they requested the ballot and that it's returned in a timely fashion, so it's counted. So I would think that that would be sufficient and we'd be well covered. I mean, if 2,000 people in town ask you for ballots, you're going to be busy anyway.
Exactly, it's kind of like a catch 22, really, you know, we're trying to do the best for our residents, but either way, I mean, we've done the November one, so we saw one way. And then we, if we do a traditional way, we know that way. And eve, in either case, someone isn't going to be happy, we just can't make everyone happy at all the time. So I guess we just kind of move forward on what we can do at this point.
You know, Mary, I would, I would say, I would say that we just allow the voters to have the option of requesting an absentee ballot in the traditional manner and, you know, with the understanding that they have to get the ballot, vote, and get it back. And, and not burden our clerk and treasurer with trying to do a townwide mailing. I think we'd be okay with that. And if folks want to come in and vote in person, then, you know, they'll have that ability as long as they follow the guidelines that are set up for being in the building and voting and follow those rules.
Okay, I wanted to make sure the select board knew that those alternatives were out there. So if there's no one who feels that there's any need to depart from our traditional town meeting format, we will just leave it as it is. Anybody else?
And I'll bet that, yeah, that, that question will probably be one of the questions that might come up tonight, so I'm glad you brought that up, Mary.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments from any select board members on that? Okay. All right. So I'm going through things, we've got about 12 minutes before the meeting ends. We still have tabled the post-road, post-road extension guardrail question. I do notice from, that the signs are up and very reflective. So it's, that, thank you Byron for paying attention to that and getting that taken care of. It is my intention, and with, I hope the board would agree, to, when the time is appropriate, to recess this meeting tonight and then come back after the school has presented and after we have presented our budget in the pre-town meeting and come back into session as the select board for the purpose of approving the warning. Does anyone have any difficulty with that suggestion? And then we would have to come in individually and sign.
Yeah.
Okay. Mary, are you going to briefly, before we recess, go over how we're doing this? Because, you know, to make sure everybody under, you know, I don't know what phone number we're using for the town meeting, whether we're using the same one and the same stuff, so that everybody has everything so we don't get lost somewhere in cyberspace?
Sure, Bill, why don't you walk us through what's going to happen? And I think for our part, it's, we just stay on board, right?
Absolutely, so, so we already have some school board members that are joining.
Absolutely. So, so we already have some school board members that are joining and other members of the public. So, uh, thi, this meeting, uh, ID was warned for the pre-town meeting. So, uh, people are starting to, people are trying to join already. Uh, and that's, that was the intention, was that we just use this one straight on through. So, uh, we carry over. Uh, so, uh, Joe, to answer your question, you just stay right here and, and the meeting's gonna continue.
Okay, and, and once they're done, um, they'll kind of adjourn their meeting and Mary will just pick up or the moderator will probably step in and move us toward our meeting.
Yes, Mr. Getty is already on the line.
Okay, that, that, that's, I, I want to make sure everybody, I don't want anybody to, um, get lost or miss out on the meeting if they want to be part of it. So hopefully everybody understands that and hears it. That, that should be good.
Okay. So any other questions about process? Any other questions about anything that, um, any select board member wishes to raise this evening? Um, Aaron, did you have anything in mind? I know you and I had talked briefly about a, a brief statement and I, I didn't do it, so if you wish to say anything, please feel free.
Um, that was a, just condemnation for the activities at the Capitol, um, January 6th.
Okay. I think we were all, oh, shocked, many of us. Most of us have been in the Capitol in Washington DC, um, under various school field trips or, you know, as tourists or whatever. And it was a sad day for all of us. Um, I'm continually pleased that I am blessed, that I am here in Rutland Town working with colleagues who although we, we have our disagreements, um, we remain courteous and we remain respectful of each other um, regardless of our positions on the issues. So I, I guess it has brought home to me how much I value the, my fellow select board members. Thank you very much. With that, I will entertain a motion to recess until after the pre-town school and town budget meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to recess the select board meeting to reconvene at a later time this evening. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're standing in recess, thank you. I will entertain a motion then to approve the warning as presented.
So move.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded. Um, I didn't hear of any changes that needed to be made when we were discussing any parts of this, so I think we're in good shape. Any other select board members want to comment or make any observations? If not, um, all of those in favor of approving the warning as presented, please say aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Mary, I apologize for jumping in, but, um, Matt Getty mentioned that there's one date on the warrant.
Yes.
In 2020.
Okay, yeah, it's 2021, it's Article 6, um, which is, it was just a typo. So if, even if we have to hand to it, we'll change that 2021 to 2021.
We've already updated.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the eyes carried it. We have approved the town, Town of Rutland warning. Just a reminder, please come in as soon as you can to the town clerk's office and sign the warning so it can be printed and we're going to printers shortly. Um, any other matters to come before the select board this evening?
I'd like to, uh, thank Bill and Matt for doing a super job for this first virtual, uh, pre-town meeting. I thought everything went really good and it's technological nightmare for me, but these guys really made it work good and my hat's off to them.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Bill and Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Nobody wants to?
So move, Mary. I, I, I do, I've gotta go have supper, so I'll move that we adjourn.
Motion's made by Joe, is there a second?
Second.
Aaron seconds. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.